On this April the 4th, we will call this meeting officially to order. And we will start as usual with our chaplain prayer and pledges. And we have our police chaplain, Lorenzo Hatch, here to lead us in both.
Good morning. Please bow your heads with me. Good and gracious God, we give you thanks and praise for all your blessings, especially for the blessing of freedom. Lord, we ask that you bless this council with wisdom to discern your will and the courage to do it. May they always be guided by the light of your Spirit. Protect our brave men and women who serve our community as firefighters and police officers. May all we do bless your holy name. And I ask this in all things through your Son, our Lord Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns forever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Good morning, everyone. And we will start, we have three proclamations this morning. And the first one is going to be the month of the military child. So those in the audience that are here representing our military families, please come forward. Good morning. We'll end up moving to the front anyway, so you're okay however you are. Yeah, okay. Since 1986, the Department of Defense has recognized military children during the month of April. The commitment and sacrifice of our military's youngest heroes in supporting the brave men and women of the U.S. Armed Forces is worthy of honor and celebration. The unique demands upon the children of our military personnel do not go unnoticed, from often being the new child in school or the feeling of a missing apparent deployed while serving our country. Here in San Angelo, we are blessed to have Goodfellow Air Force Base. Strong military families that call our community home add so much to our West Texas community. Today and for the month of April, we will make a special effort to lift up our military families and to salute them and the contribution and resilience of our military children. As part of this salute, San Angelo ISD is partnering with the City of San Angelo to honor our military families and children. The city and SAISD invite our San Angelo community to join in our salute and gratitude. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, and together with San Angelo Independent School District administrators, principals, educators, staff, and students, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of April as Month of the Military Child, and urge all the citizens of San Angelo to acknowledge the occasion of this month in honor and recognition of the outstanding strength of our military children and their families, and in gratitude of their sacrifice. Thank you all.
How are you?
How do you get this to you?
Thank you so much.
And you take the microphone.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Gunter and council members. Good morning. I'm Molly Turk. I'm the Executive Director of Communications at San Angelo ISD. Here in San Angelo, we are blessed to have a longstanding partnership supporting the men, women, and families of Goodfellow Air Force Base. Strong military families call our community home and add so much to our West Texas community and our SAISD schools. As part of Month of the Military Child, we honor and recognize the commitment, sacrifice, and resiliency of our military's youngest heroes for their role in supporting the United States Armed Forces and our nation. In our district, we have nearly 600 military-connected students and are also proudly home to four TEA Purple Star campuses. That's Bel Air Elementary, Glenmore Elementary, Glen Middle School, and Central High School. The Purple Star designation recognizes Texas schools that show their support and commitment to meeting the unique needs of military-connected students and their families. Today, we're joined by many special guests, including members of the SAISD School Board, members of SAISD Administration, including Superintendent Dr. Carl Detloff, many representatives from Goodfellow Air Force Base, particularly Training Wing Commander Colonel Matthew Rauman. And we also have a very special guest with us today, one of our outstanding military-connected students, Maisha Allen. Maisha is a junior. If you want to come forward. Maisha is a junior at Central High School and for the second year in a row has been named the Boys and Girls Club of America Texas Military Youth of the Year. He's been awarded this for his academics, his character, leadership skills, and community service. He is the first SAISD student to win this award and also the first at Goodfellow Air Force Base. So we're really proud of you and glad you're a part of our community. So it's an honor to serve Goodfellow and our military-connected students and to grow the hopes and dreams of military students. And we hope that you will all join us in celebration of military children this month, but especially on Friday, April 14th, for Purple Up Day by wearing purple to support our military students. Thank you.
The coordinator's position.
Well, usually it's a, well, if it's-
Will she public comment before we pull it?
Remember, you can't see the photographer.
You're not smart enough to really answer.
You're not in the picture. There are a lot of short ones still in the back.
Max, what grade was that young man in? I wish he'd applied for boys.
Our next proclamation is the Fair Housing Month. So those in the audience here to receive this award and support the Fair Housing Month, please come forward. The Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11th, 1968, enshrined into federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. The Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based off race, color, religion, gender, disability, familiar status, and national origin. Additionally, the City of San Angelo is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. Economic stability, community health, and human relations in all communities are improved by diversity and integration. Fair housing is integral to the ethical commitment of members of the National Association of Realtors and the San Angelo Association of Realtors, and is critical to the ability of all real estate professionals to serve their clients, customers, and communities. Acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity work against the goal of decency and fairness in housing practices. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, dear who do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Fair Housing Month, in San Angelo to establish the City of San Angelo as an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promote appropriate activities by private and public entities intended to provide or advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of San Angelo, Texas.
Are you speaking?
I am. Morning, y'all. Thank you, Mayor Gunter, and esteemed council members for having us today. We are so thankful to be here representing the San Angelo Association of Realtors. I'm Ashley Hambride. I'm the president of the association this year. I also have with me members of the Realtor Association, a part of our executive team, as well as the Chair of our Education Committee. Every April, Texas joins the nation in celebrating Fair Housing Month. Realtors take this opportunity to share their passion about their commitment to fair housing. The Federal Fair Housing Act prohibits housing discrimination based off race, color, national origin, religion, gender, family status, or disability. It is our duty, obligation, and privilege to be passionate about ensuring that the dream of homeownership remains attainable for everyone. But our efforts do not stop being a priority at the end of this month. This is a part of who we are as Realtors, and we are proud advocates for protecting private property rights for all. Thank you for having us.
Our third proclamation is Alcohol Awareness Month. And those of you in the audience supporting Alcohol Awareness Month, please come forward. Alcohol is a primary factor in the four leading causes of death for youth ages 10 to 21. Almost 100,000 persons die each year from alcohol-related causes: drinking and driving crashes, other accidents, falls, fires, alcohol-related homicides, and suicide. Approximately 15 million current drinkers in the United States are dependent on alcohol. Adolescents use alcohol more than tobacco or illicit drugs, and young people begin drinking on average at 13 years of age. Young people who begin drinking before age 15 are four more times likely to develop alcohol dependence than those who begin drinking at age 21. Alcohol abuse is linked to as many as 2/3 of all sexual assaults and date rapes. For all these reasons, the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Council for the Concho Valley and the Concho Valley Cares Coalition are asking the residents of San Angelo to join in recognizing April as Alcohol Awareness Month. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Alcohol Awareness Month in San Angelo, Texas, and call upon all residents of San Angelo to support efforts that will increase community awareness and support for individuals and families coping with alcoholism in our community.
Thank you all. Who's going to speak today? You are fantastic. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you, Mayor Gunter, and our City Council members for having us here today to proclaim April as Alcohol Awareness Month. My name is Jennifer Flores, and I work at the Alcohol and Drug Awareness Center for the Concho Valley as our Community Coalition Partnerships Director. Today, I have with me our CEO, Eric Sanchez, our Prevention Director, Ray Valladolid, and our CCP Coordinator, Lee Jordan. At ADAC, we offer services such as prevention, treatment, whether that be inpatient or outpatient, and recovery and detox. Our prevention team works tirelessly, traveling from county to county, working with schools and our Boys and Girls Clubs for the Concho Valley. They provide education and life skills to help students and youth learn more about a healthy, drug-free lifestyle and the dangers of alcohol and other drugs. At our Cotton Lindsey Center and Journey Recovery Center, counselors provide one-on-ones, education, support, and accountability with our clients, and help them have the skills to be successful in their recovery journey. I encourage anyone in the community that is or knows someone struggling with a substance use disorder or alcohol use disorder to give our office a call and to seek treatment. I also encourage community members to help reduce stigmas associated with alcohol and substance use disorders by showing kindness and empathy towards those suffering with addiction and avoiding stigmatizing language. Together, we can create a safer and healthier community. Thank you.
We will now move into our public comment portion of the agenda. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz's, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Do we have individuals in the audience who would like to come forward and offer public comment? If so, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Leah Barbie. I live at 3517 Green Ridge, and I have been asked to read these remarks to you today. Madam Mayor and council members, my name is Craig Myers, and I am a resident of Single Member District 4. I would like to make a recommendation and request based upon three irregularities in the handling of the agenda item in the last meeting regarding a funding request from tiers by Gessimini Church. The first irregularity was the abandonment of protocol and best practices by which meetings are conducted.
Brandon, this is on the agenda, so I don't think it's appropriate she make comments now, but would you please advise us on that?
Yeah, that's all right. We should take this comment on a regular.
So that's fine. I'm good with that, and thank you all.
You'll be able to speak.
You can come back and talk about it later.
You'll come back during the regular agenda item and offer those comments.
I'm sorry, I have a doctor's appointment.
Well, can you give it to somebody else to read, or I'll be glad to read it for you? Other public comment?
Hi, I'm Mike Burnett, Single Member District 1. Speaking today is in my role as Board Chair of the Concho Valley Homeless Planning Coalition. I just wanted to give you all an update from the winter, now that hopefully winter has passed, even though Easter is not past yet, and sometimes it freezes before Easter, so... This winter, the program Into the Warmth was activated, and we had over 2,300 room nights at hotels. This was approximately 190 unique homeless individuals. We spent approximately $150,000 on rooms, another $10,000 on transportation, food, and other services. The Colray Johnson Rec Center was activated 11 nights. We averaged about 10 homeless individuals per night and spent an additional $1,000 or so in goods and services at the rec center. We also had over 3,000 volunteer hours to run both programs through the course of the winter. At this last, a couple of weeks ago, Concho Valley Community Action Agency had a bridge builders conversation where one of the topics that was brought up by members of the city, residents of the city, they spent some time talking about decriminalizing homelessness. I ask that the City Council place on a future agenda the consideration of a homeless bill of rights, which seeks to protect central rights for all unhoused individuals. These include access to basic requirement necessary for sustaining life, including shelter, sanitation, medical care, clothing, and food; able to move freely in public spaces in the same manner as other persons without harassment or intimidation; have equal opportunities for employment; receive emergency medical care; exercise equal civic privileges, including the right to register to vote and the right to vote; have personal information protected; have a reasonable expectation of privacy on his or her personal property; receive equal treatment by state, county, and municipal agencies; allow for access to resources for housing and supportive housing; and I'm glad that the city recognized Fair Housing Month for all residents, including our homeless neighbors; the right to not obstructively seek shelter, social services, legal aid, and education, and the right to feel safe. Basically, these rights entitle our homeless neighbors a right that having a permanent, not having a permanent or valid address is not requisite for retaining these rights. I would like to invite you all to attend the next Homeless Coalition's General Meeting on April 12th at 10:00 a.m. in the Tom Green County Library. This will afford you an opportunity to hear what local agencies, a large number of them nonprofit, are doing to work with our homeless neighbors. I also invite you to attend the monthly Navigation Day at the Concho Valley Transit Annex on Monday, April 24th, to see in action the work of 15-plus nonprofits working with our homeless neighbors, providing services that very day. Now that winter is over, it's the time to plan for next winter. It's going to take a village to meet the need, and I look forward to continuing the partnership between the city and the City of San Angelo and the Concho Valley Homeless Planning Coalition.
Perfect. Wrapped it up, great. Right on schedule. Thank you, Mike. Other public comment?
Good morning. My name is Nelda Nellen. I reside in District 1. I come once again to thank you for the various venues and committees that you all have provided for those of us that have people that are impacted by disabilities to speak and make our wishes known to the City of San Angelo. I've attended planning meetings. I've attended the tourist meeting, always with the idea that when you spend money, please at least recognize that we have a disability community that needs some little extra things. So thank you for that. I want to also say that I'm really impressed with the boards that you all have. And I've, as I've attended those meetings, I see that they really do a lot of research into the issues. And I want to remind you that those people work very, very hard for no money. So please, when they come, listen to them. Thank you.
Andrea Soufley. I live in District 1. I have a comment on the consent agenda. Do I do that now?
Well, if somebody pulls the item, then you can comment on it at that point in time. So I don't know what item you want to comment on, but it would need to be pulled in order to open it up for conversation.
I will do that for you, Andrea, so that you can comment.
Can I go ahead then?
No, not till we go to the, but you can come back up. Okay. We're getting your steps in today, everyone. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we will now close the consent, I mean, the public comment section of the agenda. We will move into the consent agenda, and I will ask each board member if they are interested in pulling an item from the consent, and I will start with Larry. C, D, and E. Karen.
Kay.
Lucy.
No ma'am.
Harry.
No ma'am.
Tom.
That's in the pool.
Tommy. All right. We will do two things. One, we're going to move item 5G to the regular agenda, and it will follow after 6D. So G is also not being considered at this moment in the agenda. And I need a motion then to approve item A, B, F, H, I, J, L, M, and N. May I have that motion? A motion by Harry, seconded by Larry. Any public comment concerning those items at this point? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor of approving those consent agenda items, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no, no's, the consent agenda has been approved with the exception of items C, D, E, G, and K. So we will start with item C first. It's consider awarding WU-05-23 Liquid Ammonia Sulfate to Chamillion Industries and Univar Solutions based on the lowest bid and availability for one year with two additional one-year term extensions, budgeted for purchase in fiscal years 2023 through 2025, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. And you are on, Andy.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Andy Vasalio, Assistant Director of Water Utilities. C, D, and E all are for bids for chemicals at the water treatment plant, so we may be able to handle all those together if permissible.
I apologize for not bringing it up to you sometime this week earlier. It's a simple question. Does the contract as it stands obligate those companies to provide those chemicals at the same or a lesser price than is currently in effect?
Yes, with the exception that there are, and we've seen this within the last couple of years, there are exceptions to those with the price increases that are outside the typical control. So there are limitations contractually of how much they can increase. However, with the way the market's been recently, the market trends have far exceeded that. So I realize that's a very vague answer because of the market conditions have resulted in skyrocketing prices of chemicals, and they just can't hold their market prices sometimes for the full year, two years, or three years.
And would it be wiser to essentially go out to other concerns for bids?
Well, we did.
In the off years?
So the way we have it structured right now is for one-year contract with the extension of one year or another year afterwards, provided they are willing to hold those prices. I'm expecting to be back here next year because I don't think that they'll accept those prices for more than one year. But we always hope that if the market does stabilize, that we can maintain those contracts.
How do we ensure that they don't take advantage of quote "market conditions" so that we are held hostage for price increases that are over and above what would be considered normal increases?
There are two ways. Number one, we can bid it out again next year or bid it even partially through the year. The other one is when they have an excessive increase, they have to provide justification for that. And that is reviewed by staff, as reviewed by, you know, purchasing as well. And so, in general, you'll see those market trends throughout, and it'll be well documented in the news and other places as well in the industry.
All right. So further questions, Larry?
Thank you very much.
Are we able to, because he pulled, Larry pulled C, D, and E. Are we able to take a vote on C, D, and E? Or do we need to vote on each individual?
Vote on together.
All right. So is there a motion to approve C, D, and E? Motion made by Larry, seconded by Karen. Any public- Any public item concerning items C, D, and E? Seeing none, we will now take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none opposed, items C, D, and E have been approved. We will now go to item K. Consider resolution designating Teresa James as the ADA coordinator for the city of San Angelo.
Mayor, I'd like to make comment real quick. So, this item was pulled. Teresa James has experience in teaching special ed. She's really super knowledgeable in this field as far as ADA coordination. I did understand the concern that was expressed last time as far as her being attorney, but she really truly is the most qualified person in the city, and to this point, she's been doing a wonderful job. So, that is my recommendation that we do appoint Teresa James as the ADA coordinator for the city of San Angelo.
Do I have a motion to approve item K?
So moved.
So moved by Harry, seconded by Karen.
Wait, no. We, we pulled that because there are people in the.
But we're going to have public comment. I've got to have a motion on the floor first.
Second.
Seconded by Lucy. All right. We will now open it up for public comment.
Andrea Soufley, District One. Today, I'm asking all of you not to appoint the city attorney as the ADA coordinator, no matter how temporary. I'm also asking that the ADA coordinator be moved to another department or directly under the city manager. Not only is having the ADA person in the legal department a PR nightmare, it's not a practice at all at any city governments, nor does it resonate well with people with disabilities in this community, for sure. A population that has been marginalized and considered to be on the fringes and no doubtily encounter tragic experiences do not feel comfortable engaging with the city attorney. Plus, at the town hall meeting two weeks ago, the city attorney made a grossly insensitive comparison between her pushing a stroller with her children down a ramp, excuse me, to navigating a ramp in a wheelchair. This offensive comment was made to be relatable. However, it demonstrated how out of touch she is with the disabled community while being outstandingly offensive. She is not suited for the task in the least bit. Not qualified, not relatable, and not approachable.
Further public comment?
I'm Henry, Service Member, District Three. And I also have some comments on that as well, and I'm going to start with essentially a thank you because since we first brought up the issue of ADA compliance and accessibility in October of last year, we have provided numerous tools and information to the city in various forms to support positive change in the right direction. Up to this point, the city has succeeded in achieving what the city referred to as low-hanging fruit, and while we're not quite where we want to be, I would like to say thank you for those low-hanging fruits to show appreciation, but also reiterate that we're not going against the city, but rather trying to save it and make it a place where everyone is appreciated and included. So, thank you for the following. One, adding an accommodation request form to the ADA page of the city website where individuals can request accommodations, adding grievance procedures to the ADA page of the website, adding an ADA coordinator information to the water bills, listening to all of our public comments, hosting a town hall, agreeing to wait to make the decision on the river stage improvements until the disability community has given input, making an attempt to understand what life is like for people with disabilities by referring to and sharing about your own family members and friends, and to the city council members who have taken time to sit down and engage with us. It's a very complicated, extensive topic, and the bare minimum and basics can be a great discussion that ensure decisions can be made in an informed and data-driven manner. I would actually like to invite each one of you for coffee or lunch, but what we are still looking for is for the city to start off on the right foot, especially with the bare minimum sample processes. Specifically, this agenda item with the ADA coordinator and also the committee item, which is on the regular agenda, are two opportunities. It's an opportunity to navigate through an ADA process, learn from it with minimal mistakes, work together, and really set the foundation and expectations for the city and the city council. However, unfortunately, let me give you an example why I would like this to be removed and not to vote Teresa James in that position. These agendas, it's a simple process for city council agendas, are actually required to have information on how to request accommodations to participate in today's meeting, but that phone number just goes to the city clerk. So, my only way to request accommodations is through a phone number, and it's not even the person designated as the ADA coordinator. The calendar where all the meetings are posted, that doesn't have that information at all. And again, these are, I'm saying these because these are simple things that should have already been in place. So, we're making decisions and saying someone's qualified, but they haven't even done those bare minimum pieces. So, if we can't get those, if we can't get those two staple processes correct after already being informed by our team that they're wrong and they need to be updated, I don't understand how we can vote on an ADA coordinator who's not even here today, or again, an ADA committee, which I'll talk about later. So, that would be my only public comment. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
A lot of what Ms. Henry just mentioned a while ago, the improvements that we've made, and there've been some really good improvements, that was led by Teresa James. She, she actually took the charge, and she did a wonderful job. Those two items that you just mentioned a while ago that we've fallen short on, we'll take a look at that, but we'll get that corrected. I still feel very strongly that, first of all, Teresa James as the ADA director would be directly under the city manager. You mentioned that a while ago. That will happen. But again, the improvements that she's made to this point in such a short period of time really shows her qualification. I still stand very firm in my recommendation that Teresa James should be appointed the ADA coordinator.
Any further public comment? We only allow one speak, time to speak, but is there anyone else who would like to come forward and make comment on Teresa James being made as the ADA coordinator?
Brenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Please.
I've seen this, and I, and I saw it got pulled, and it kind of made me look at it one or so. I looked over, and as you would say, when you bring these questions up, we look forward. I asked Teresa for her credentials on there, and when, when you roll through it, she is by far the most educated, credentialed, trained person with the ADA that we have on staff. There's no question about that. She's actually also enrolled in schools in May and June, and I can't see going any other way in being able to provide you the most intelligent person we have for these discussion topics. Now, if there's personality conflicts, I get that, but I can't see going with anybody else other than Teresa just because of, you know, at least 12 to 13 courses she has taken, the training, she's had conversations with me over the past week. So, I will go and follow up with Daniel and follow suit that there is no one better suited for this than Teresa to represent the city.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion. We've already got two.
Oh, sorry? Then, let me ask one more time. Is there any more public comments? So, and if you've spoken on this item already, you cannot come back and add additional comment.
I have spoken with Ms. James, and I'm going to say that I don't simply say no, but what I do say is, I don't want somebody temporary. I want you getting out there and finding the best person to hire in this position because there are people with the qualifications right now. So, do we have a timeline for looking for this type of person?
We don't have established in this budget a full-time ADA coordinator. That is something that is discussed on an annual basis. We don't create FTEs during this, when the season of the year actually starts for the budget. So, at this point, she is filling in, in the coordinator position. That's a topic that will be discussed at a later time.
Okay. So, you're saying that we have to go to the budget planning?
We always do that as far as any FTEs are created. We're not creating a full-time employee at this point. We're not. She's just taking on added responsibilities in an area that quite frankly, she's spent quite a bit of time on. Again, I emphasize she's done a wonderful job.
I know that. Okay. Thank you.
We allow only one time to the microphone to comment during public session or any regular agenda items. With that, there's a motion, there's a second, all last, one last time for public comment. All right. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving item K, please say aye.
Aye.
Seeing none opposed, motion passes seven to zero. We'll move into the regular agenda items. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is consider purchasing 117.604 acres of land out of a part of CZEC survey 645 abstract number 4212 and West Spornhorn survey 644 abstract number 1811 for a price of $20,000 per acre plus closing costs not to exceed $4,000, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents and amending the fiscal year 2022-23 budget to utilize $2,356,080 from the general funds, fund balance. Jeremy, you're on.
Morning, Mayor. Council staff. Jeremy Valgartsen, the San Angelo Regional Airport Director. Thank you for having me again. This is another exciting day for us, and this was a new one for me, but we've got the unique opportunity to purchase some land around the airport. This is over there off South Concho Drive. It's on the east side of the runways, and I, I'll show you a lot of maps, and I'll kind of describe why we need this land. About a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, this landowner came to us and was interested in building a bunch of houses out in this region. It's problematic because where the runways sit, those lands would have been within the runway protection zone, they would have been under the departure surface, and they would have been under the approach surface. So, the landowner was gracious enough to come to us to make sure he was doing everything to help protect the city and to help protect the airport. This may look confusing to you. I'll need to explain it, but if you picture a football stadium, and the blue area would be the grass of the field, everything outside of that would be the stands as they're going up. So, this is how we protect for our airspace. The, the RPZ, which is the runway protection zone, that is the airspace that the FAA is trying to own. We're trying to purchase all that land, which makes this project highly eligible for FAA reimbursement in the future. They want to own all that land. They don't just want easement, they want to own it all the way to the surface because this is where, if an airplane was to run off the runway or if it was to come in short, this is where it would end up. The red area there, that's the, the land in question, and the yellow bars as they go out, that's the height. So, that would be the bottom of the stands in the football stadium. Everything above that, we want to protect for. So, you can count those lines, and every line goes out 10 feet. So, you can see if you were to build homes in that area, you would have to go out quite a ways before you could put a, a single or even a two-story house to get out there. So, building homes up against the fence was going to be problematic in this area. Stop me if you have any questions on the maps. So, why do we need it? We, we, every time we sign our grants, and we receive several grants from the FAA, we're obligated to the FAA for the next 20 years, and we re-up every time we sign those grants. Grant assurance number five, preserving rights and powers. Assurance number six, consistency with local plans. Assurance 20, hazard removal mitigation, and assurance 21, compatible land use. If we were to not protect for this area, we would be violating all four of those grant assurances that we, we sign each and every year. I already talked about airspace protection. We are not considering runway 927 because that project is out for bid now. We're looking to decommission that runway. So, this is strictly from our primary runway, runway 321, that has our instrument landing system on it. All my slides are to protect that surface. And then, of course, airport development protection. We signed the master plan in 2020, and the airport layout plan suggests in the future we'll be taking the terminal and moving it to the east side of the runway. This is the airport layout plan that was signed by us. You can see the purple area there, that's proposed for terminal expansion. The yellow, everything in yellow is new. It doesn't exist to this, at this current time. So, that taxiway would be right up against our existing fence line and right up against those, where those homes would be. So, when the airplane's taxiing out to the runway, it would blow the little kid's swimming pool off his backyard if homes were built that close. You can see all the other lines that are extending out. That's the approach and departure surface within the land in question. Eligibility, as I said, this is eligible for FAA reimbursement. I have talked to the FAA extensively on this item. They are aware of it, and they're, they're excited as much as we are. They obviously don't have the cash now, and when they give us the cash for land acquisition, it's through our entitlement dollars, and we get $1 million every year for entitlements. So, it would, plus, we want to get all of our projects done that we have slated on our capital improvement program before we start dipping into that, that cash fund balance. So, the FAA will only reimburse with entitlement dollars. My CIP, our CIP has already got projects programmed for the next 10 years, so it's going to take some time before we get a cash reimbursement from the FAA. That next item there, this is, I don't like to call it a loophole because this is allowable in the FAA system. I underline "may" because it strictly depends on our project manager with the FAA on if he's going to allow it or not. But we can take the portion of that land. We still own it as the city of San Angelo, and we can just obligate it for airport use, and we can use that as match money instead of an actual cash value.
What is that airports, airport use described as?
Anything that we determine necessary. The FAA now will allow non-aeronautical use as long as the non-aeronautical revenue goes directly to the airport for airport functions. If it's within the approach surface like we have now, the FAA is going to deem it that it needs to be used for aeronautical use. That can be a hangar, that could be a flight school. I mean, it can be anything related to airport use. We just can't put storage units out there. The FAA will never own it. It will always be ours. It just becomes obligated at that point. Right now, it's, even if we purchase it today, it is not obligated to the airport. It's city land that will be given to the airport, but it does not have to be used for airport use until we obligate it. Here's the funding mechanism. It's 117.604 acres. The price is $20,000 an acre plus closing costs not to exceed $4,000 for a total funding It just kind of shows the future development based off our master plan, airport layout plan. Everything to the left of the screen is where the terminal sits now, where all the hangars sit now. We're almost already built out, and as you know, we're putting in a taxi lane now because we don't have a whole lot of room for expansion on that side of the runways. Circle area up top, that's between the two runways, that's very prime real estate where we could do airport development, and then after that, we're kind of stuck with all of our development to the east side of the runways. The blue area is the land in question, so you can see this will help us open up some of that land available for development in the future. The orange area is owned by another landowner, and that will be for another meeting. How is it funded? We're looking at the general fund to fund this project, and then the, the asset will be transferred to the airport once it's purchased. And then, here's our recommendation, which is the language that is in the agenda. Any questions?
Do I have questions or comments for Jeremy? Go ahead, Tommy.
Jeremy, does this help with the FAA as they evaluate projects into the future that we in fact have this land under our control, that they may look more favorably upon some of our projects as opposed to if we did not own that land?
Not necessarily, but what it does is it cuts about three years out of the process because if we did not own the land and we needed it for a project, we'd have to go through the environmental review, the historical review, all the FAA process to get it. So, if we can get it now and it's available for development, it'll speed up the process for sure.
Further questions for Jeremy on this project? Any? No? Okay.
Motion we approve is presented, Mayor.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second? A second by Karen. Public comment on this item? Seeing no, hearing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With that, it passes seven to zero. We will now move into item B, which is consideration of amendments to the tax increment reinvestment zone called TIRZ, incentive policy regarding nonprofit organizations. John, you're on.
Thank you. As you probably recall, at one of your recent meetings, you all directed us to take an item for discussion back to the tiers board regarding whether or not to continue to allow nonprofits, nonprofit organizations to receive incentive funds in the north tiers. The tiers board did look at that at both. The tiers board did look at that at both their February and March regular meetings and have made recommendations. Here's the current policy, I won't read through all of it, but basically it says that nonprofits are eligible for funding in the north, but both the board and council have to make a finding that there's a significant economic impact from the project, and it does also require a three-quarters majority vote by both the board and council for that to be approved. So at their February meeting, the board did vote by a five-to-three vote to keep the current policy. Their recommendation was to continue to allow funding for the north nonprofits. At that same meeting, they asked us to bring back an item at their March meeting, and so I'll come back to this slide in just a second, but then at their March meeting, they voted six-three to recommend an additional amendment to open up the south to nonprofits. I think their concern was that the policy be uniform between north and south. I did point out to them that the reason that it was done originally was there's, as you know, a limited amount of funding in the south, and so that's why the recommendation was not to open it up to nonprofits in the south. But given that at the time, there was over $2 million in the north, the thinking was expanding it to nonprofits might be beneficial to help use some of that money. Let me come back to, this is the rationale that they gave for not changing the current policy in the north. Basically, that improvements to nonprofit properties and buildings help improve the entire area, and they likened it to some of the other projects that we funded, like street projects, like Chadburn. That doesn't increase anybody's tax, taxable values on property, it's simply improving the overall area and the underlying capabilities of businesses. Similarly, improving a nonprofit property would help the surrounding area by basically improving and encouraging revitalization. So that was, that was the basis for the board's recommendation. That's really, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of a brief overview. Again, their recommendation is to not change the policy in the north and also expand to allow nonprofits in the south.
Karen, it looks like you have a comment?
I have a question for you, John. Are you aware of any city in the state of Texas that currently has a tiers program that permits funding to nonprofits?
You know, that's something we have not looked into. It wouldn't surprise me if that's the case, but I, we actually have not done that research looking at other cities.
You know, if you take a look at the Texas legislature's policy in terms of when they created the opportunity for cities to create tiers programs, the number-one line on that says the following, that in fact, the money should be focused or is available for cities and counties to use it for public benefit and infrastructure. And infrastructure is the key word that they use, and it's focused on areas that are, let's just say, areas that have seen a deterioration in terms of those districts, that in fact, by improving the infrastructure within those districts is a great opportunity for people to look at it and say, now that they're investing in the infrastructure here, making it a much better area, we believe that businesses will start to improve their buildings as well as their facilities in terms of opening up a business. But one of the things I want to, I want to make a few comments before we go further on this. First, the issue of the for-profit versus nonprofit is a simple financial conversation. It is not a racial issue, nor should it be an issue that is an emotional issue, with lots of stories about the value of our nonprofits and the stories that go with their services. The Texas legislature, when they created the program, created a program to encourage reinvestment into blighted areas. The first item was the opportunity for cities and counties to use the money to improve infrastructure, which in turn should help develop an area. I know the value of our nonprofits. Nonprofits already have the advantage over for-profit by the nature they do not have to pay property taxes or sales taxes. Nonprofits already have been given a break, and you need to use all the, and at the same point, they use all the services the city provides, including infrastructure improvement and fire and police. Yes, employees of nonprofits pay property taxes and sales taxes, but so do all of the for-profit businesses. Nonprofits have the greatest opportunity to participate in San Angelo Gives. In fact, almost $2 million last year was raised in support of our nonprofit organizations. The whole concept of the program is to create development that puts more money back into the pot to be reinvested, creating the tax increment finance, refinance program. And that's a key word, tax increment, meaning increased tax revenue, property tax revenue, back into the pot. Tax is the first word in the program. We cannot be giving money that does not create new revenue or growth in property tax values. Just because we can does not mean we should. If we need to reconsider one zone or one policy, then we need to discuss that as well as we go down the road. This managing two different tier zones with two different policies doesn't make sense, and so if we need to adapt one that was probably not correct vote to begin with, then we need to relook at some of the, the whole idea of the tiers program. Maybe we need to eliminate the tiers program. But what we cannot be doing is to go totally against the concept of this program from day one. It's called tax increment refinance zone, meaning reinvesting, creating new property tax dollars that fill the pot back up again to reinvest for someone else. What doesn't make sense is that the south has said they wanted to borrow money from the north or use the north money because they never have enough money for all the projects that have been submitted, that are eligible, that are businesses, as I said, not nonprofits, but businesses. So why we would open the door for additional people to apply for it when we've already said we don't have enough money to fund the existing for-profit businesses? Again, I say, just because we can does not mean we should, and perhaps we need to go back and relook at the tiers program overall. Those are my thoughts today.
Mayor?
Yes.
Even in our own literature, my, my whole point is, we looked at this as a development of commercial and retail establishments to tax and to grow. We need to be consistent in what we do across both zones, I get that. I think by accident, nonprofits were left in the north zone back from, I think, my second meeting in 2017, but I had a talk with Tony Villarreal yesterday, and we talked for 30 minutes about it, and I certainly see the other sides and points, but I think it's about consistency here. I drove Martin Luther King Street this morning, which I drive three to four times every day. I went down there and probably counted a minimum of seven places that would be nonprofits that could fall in there, but I don't see the, the real estate beside them that could bring back to, I think, what the commercial part is, and I think you need to be consistent. If we open up for nonprofits all the way through, there's, you could just list the whole group that could actually legally apply for this, from the largest, you know, from Shannon Hospital down to everything all the way down through the south zone. And so I'll just tell everybody honestly, I think it's about consistency in the top to the bottom. I don't think nonprofits fit what this was designed for, and they don't refill the pool back up. And, you know, I was very adamant with Tony yesterday, and I told him, I said, I'm strongly against, you know, nonprofits getting funding out of something that was designed not for them to get. And there's, there's some benefits there, which the mayor covered. And so that brought up a question to me, and I have talked to several people about if a nonprofit does take, you know, government municipal funds, are they still eligible for a lot of the benefits they request? And that brings a lot of tax questions up there, too. So it's my two cents worth on it, y'all, but I appreciate everybody's call and talk to me about it.
You know, I, I really believe strongly that nonprofits bring a lot to the city, and this is not to question what they bring to the city, but this program was not, was not created. I say it again, tax increment reinvestment zone. We have had a discussion before about the south and about the streetscape in the south. There will be comments made that that program dramatically changed the environment for businesses in the south. It was presented in a meeting to the tiers board several weeks ago or maybe months ago about using the money to improve the north in the same way we did the south in terms of a streetscape program. Craig Myers was one of the first to bring up the fact that the south streetscape, that's hard to say, streetscape program was beneficial to the south and should be considered for the north. That could improve the entire district. I heard comments about how dark it is. Agreed. This, being able to use tiers money to improve the north, is a great idea. It will change the environment, it will improve the overall area, it will bring together the north and the south. The idea that we even approve this as two different zones is really unfortunate because it keeps coming up, the north versus the south, and we need to stop that conversation. Yes, Harry?
If I might. I have a unique perspective on this because I have businesses in both the south and the north zone, and I will say this, I want to be consistent. I want to be consistent across the board on what we do. I agree with the mayor. I wish we didn't have two separate zones because that always, I always feel like we're, we're pitting one particular zone against the other. But I want to be consistent all the way through, and you heard me talk about nonprofits last time. I had a lady come and, and talk about being an executive director for a nonprofit. I get that. When I was between board presidents, between the executive directors at the Boys and Girls Club, I ran that club. I've been in a leadership role at a lot of nonprofits in this, this particular community over the last 30 years, and in every one of those places, we're always looking for funding, but we don't necessarily look for tax funding. We're looking for, from individuals, from Tuesday Gives in May, from foundations, other of those places. And I will tell you that the way this tiers money was originally put in, it was for businesses to increase their tax base so other businesses could take advantage of that. So fundamentally, I'm not in favor of this particular agenda item, and I would say I will agree with the mayor. I'd like to get consistency across the board on everything and take this out of nonprofits altogether.
Yes, Lucy?
Okay, how many, oh, where is he? You wouldn't sat down, James. How many nonprofit organizations do we have in the tiers zones, in both the north and south, where it would, you would look at and say, okay, that one's a non-organization?
We haven't mapped those out and counted how many nonprofits there are.
Dale, would you like to comment on that?
Excuse me, Del Velazquez, Executive Director for Downtown San Angelo. I can only speak to downtown because we do look at every piece of property in downtown as far as the tax base and how those are distributed in terms of what we do in economic development. I will tell you, from a percentage perspective, and I have the number, but I don't have it on the top of my head, what, how many nonprofit properties are in downtown San Angelo within the central business district? There are over 52% of the properties in downtown San Angelo are nonprofit-owned properties. Again, I don't know, I know we have 389 buildings within the central business district, and I will tell you, as, when, when I first started, and we started tracking the vacant and underutilized buildings, we were at 123 buildings that were vacant or underutilized. Today, we're down to about 49 buildings that have been transformed into businesses or some type of effect, excuse me, impacting economic development in relationship to the tax base.
My other question, my, my other comment is that if we have a tiers board that came back and with a vote of approving that the north and the south stay in with a nonprofit organization, I would have to say that that's why we put those people in those positions on those boards, is to let them do the heavy lifting, for them to realize, hey, this is the way it is, this is the policy and everything. With them speaking that way, I would think that they, we would have, we would need to look at that and trust what they say as far as coming up with their recommendation of allowing the north and the south nonprofit organizations to be eligible for tiers funding.
I think we need to make sure our board members are fully aware of why this program was created, instead of making an emotional decision. We need to make sure that we understand the concept of the program and that we, the south and that board has consistently said, we don't have enough money, we don't have enough money, we want money from the north, open up the north's money for the south because the south could use all that money. So there's all these issues about north versus south. Again, I say, if this is going to be the consistent, if we need to open up the vote again and reconsider whether the south can use the north money, then we need to be doing that. And that's really where this leads to. If you want consistency, let's create consistency.
I don't see how the, Mayor, let me make a comment.
Yes, go ahead, Lucy.
I don't see how the consistency would involve the north dealing with their money and the south dealing with their money. You know, this thing about north versus south, I'm against that just as much as you are. I would just want to say that if the north has their money and their tiers zoning and all that, why would you want to make it to where we're going to be disagreeing constantly about not the south not taking the north or vice versa, if, if the roles were reversed? What I'm trying to say is, if the north has their money, let them use it in their, in their district, let them use it in their, in the north zone. Whatever the south may have, let them use it to, however they want to use it on the south side. That is what I'm trying to say, that instead of trying to say, oh, let's just, let's just all throw our hands up and put it all together, that's not going to be a good idea.
You know, what I think we probably need to do is get a motion on the floor so we can open up for public comment. And so, because I know there are a lot of people here who want to offer public comments, so we need to have a motion on the floor to be able to do that.
Motion to deny.
Excuse me?
Motion to deny.
More specific than that, Harry.
Be very specific about your motion.
Well, deny the policy change to open up the south tiers for nonprofits.
We would also need that motion to include what to do with the north. The motion, as you've just stated, would not change it in the south, but also wouldn't change it in the north.
We need a motion to eliminate nonprofits from the north and the south, to deny that.
I will make that motion, motion to deny nonprofits in both zones.
North and the south are using the money for nonprofits. Is there a second? Is there a second?
So what we did was make a motion to exclude all nonprofits from tiers funding.
Correct.
Is that?
Correct. That's correct.
The agenda item's very broad to consider.
Well, we're asking the attorney, let's just say.
We're asking the attorney. We need a strong reply.
Yeah, I, I think the agenda item is broad enough to consider both those amendments. Like John said, the tiers board has considered both the north and the south, and they've made a recommendation to you guys, and so you can take action on those recommendations.
So I will second that amendment, but I mean, it still doesn't rob anybody of their ability to come forward with what they want to talk about today.
No, no, that's, the public comment will be in regards to that, regardless of whether you like it or don't like it, or add comments. So it will open it up for all public comment.
So I will second that motion by Harry.
There's a motion and a second. We will now open it up for public comment. Dale?
Thank you. I did need to get to a meeting, so I wanted to make this, these comments. First and foremost, the tiers zones were, or the tiers program was initiated by Downtown San Angelo Inc. back in 2011. San Angelo Inc. back in 2006. I was not a part of that at that point, but the initiative was started because we had two city employees. One was an assistant city manager, and one was director of planning, and both of them had served as Main Street, in Main Street programs in the state and were very cognizant of how tiers was established in the state. And so, along with Downtown San Angelo and the help of the city, we established the tiers program, or advocated, Downtown San Angelo Inc. advocated for the program. Right prior to the approval of tiers coming into play, the city had received a grant. In order to use that grant, it had to improve properties, and that grant was used, it was a small grant, and I think only about four buildings in Downtown San Angelo actually took advantage of the grant, and it was only for facades and facade improvement. They couldn't use it for anything else. Tiers opened up the door for businesses to apply for grants to improve their facades. Once that ball started rolling because of the previous grant that had been given to the city, businesses in downtown started utilizing the tiers funds for facade grants. And if you look at our priority list for tiers today, facades is one of the highest priorities, as well as health and safety issues, which predominantly means sprinklers systems for buildings in downtown. Was that right or wrong? I don't know, but the, the program, tiers, as has already been stated, was established by the state to, for public improvement projects. And I copied, or brought the copy from the Comptroller's Office, the state of Texas, who implements the Tax Increment Financing Act, Tax Code Chapter 311 Overview. And I'm not going to read the initial part, but it says, "It's to draw private investment to an area." That's the motivation, economic development. Tax increment refinancing isn't a new tax. Instead, it redirects some of the ad valorem taxes from property in a geographic area designed as a tax increment reinvestment zone to pay for improvements in the zone. Future tax revenues from each participating taxing unit that levies taxes against the property are used to pay for the cost of improvements to an area. Each taxing unit, unit may delicate, dedicate, excuse me, all, a portion of, or none of the tax revenue that is attributed to increased property values brought about by improvements within the investment.
If you could wrap up those comments, the three minutes is up.
So, the program was established to increase property values and to use the cities, or the city and county to use those funds to improve those areas.
Again, Mike Burnett, Single Member District 1. I am in support of the agenda item to allow nonprofits in the South tiers zone to apply, even though I know there's probably some of that view that, since I'm the executive director of a nonprofit, that would say he's just voting in that best interest. No, I'm voting in the best interest of nonprofits as a whole. The agenda item as presented is consideration of amendments to the tiers incentive policy regarding nonprofit organizations. The tiers board did not recommend that you get rid of the North nonprofit being allowed to, to apply, so if you vote on that today, you would be out of order.
We have an opinion from the lawyer.
Yeah, and John can confirm this, but the recommendation from tiers was to leave the policy the same in the North. The council can revoke or reject that recommendation, and with the way the item is worded, amendments, it's not limited to North or South. So, I would be comfortable with the council taking action on both.
Odd reading of the rule, but sure, whatever. Comments on focuses on businesses that give back. Comments on nonprofits don't refill the pool. Multiple comments on how nonprofits don't pay taxes and therefore aren't entitled to tiers funds. The two largest nonprofits in San Angelo is Shannon Health and Angelo State. I think they are giving back to the economic betterment of San Angelo. I think there's a gross misunderstanding of the impact of a nonprofit. For instance, my nonprofit, Concho Valley Community Action Agency funneled over $5 million back into the economy of San Angelo last year through rental assistance. When we provide rental assistance, the money paying the rent for low-income neighbors goes to the property owner who pays the property tax. And our utility assistance, that money goes back into the economy by allowing neighbors to spend money in the, in San Angelo. Our water assistance funds are paid directly to the city. And also, last year, our volunteer income tax program brought in over $2 million to San Angelo residents in the form of tax refunds that our agency does not get a cut of. We operate for free to our people. So that's over $7 million, $8 million into our economy in the Concho Valley. There's been a lot of conversations about, because we don't pay taxes, then we shouldn't be entitled to tax funds. I would like to point out that consent item I, today, authorized the city to pay $50,000 annual to SEPA, San Angelo Performing Arts Coalition, a nonprofit, using hotel tax funds to support their endeavors in managing the Murphy Auditorium in City Hall. There are past conversations about allowing the South tiers to access the North tiers pot. This is an implicit bias against the North side. Money raised in the North tiers needs to stay in the North to revitalize those businesses and nonprofits. I'd also like to call attention to the three-fourths majority rule that is in place for funding tiers. Three-fourths majority rule, also known as a supermajority, hampers the efforts to respond to problems by allowing a minority to block the preference of a majority. Also, the rule reads that it's a three-fourths majority of all, the entire membership of the board, instead of those present in a quorum. So, at the last city council meeting, it was stated that 5.25 individuals have to vote from the city council, meaning six. That's a near impossible hurdle to go. Finally, I just want to close with the chief function of community action. My agency is, at all times, to serve the best interests of people with lower incomes, which in turn serves the best interests of the entire community. We are seeking to empower and revitalize communities, especially those on the North side impacted by both business and nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
No.
Yep. Harry, go ahead.
Before Tony talks, let me get some clarification, Brandon. All right, if it says three-fourths, we've got a board vote of six to three here, that's only two-thirds.
So, the three-fourth applies to approving projects themselves, not for a policy change.
Okay.
We need to be very clear on that. Tony?
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
And council, I'm here to support the funding for the nonprofit applications that were submitted to our board. I'm sorry, I'm from SMD 1, also a tiers board member. I'm here to support that those two proposals that were submitted, they were, and they had the criteria, they met the criteria. Not only that they meet.
This is about changing the policy, it isn't about whether we voted correctly on those two projects. So, keep your comments relative to this.
It is relative to that, because you are changing the policy that nonprofits will no longer be eligible to be voted on. Is that not correct?
Correct.
That's action that council takes, yeah.
Yeah. So, what I'm saying is that these boards, the policy right now states that they are eligible for these fundings. So, you taking them away and changing the rules halfway in the game is, is not good for the community, okay?
It says may be approved.
Let me just go into what I'm here for then as well. By the city councilwoman Gonzalez, I was asked to serve on the tiers board. Before accepting the position, I took the time to survey the area that I would be responsible to represent. I also met with Brian Fox to get up to speed with the direction and goals pertaining to the use of funds for the North side. After getting approval to serve, I sought to go and get a survey in the business and to find out why there was a disconnect and hesitance for people to apply in the North side of town. The very first business that I approached was the quick vehicle sticker on the chatburn. As I was needing to renew my inspection sticker and get some empanadas from the bakery next door, as I was explaining to the owner of the building, Mr. Steve Ortiz, the program and process to apply for the funding that he would qualify for, he immediately cut me off and stated that he would not do any other project with the city of San Angelo. His experience in the sidewalk project was a burden to him and with the disappointing results of the project. He said that, that he had came to the city hall to file a complaint on the work that was done.
What work are we talking about, Tony? I'm confused.
Sidewalks.
Which ones?
The chatburn project.
The South tiers? The South and the North, around the Texas State Bank?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the project?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, just to be clear.
As it would be, he was told to contact the contractor who did the work and file agreements with him. So, he proceeded to do that, and the contractor then told him that he needed to go back to the city hall for relief since the project was already completed. He then told me that he had approached the mayor and that he told him just to get over it.
That was not me, just to be clear.
No, yes.
Yeah, just to be clear, it was the previous mayor, not me.
This is what we are facing out there. This is the, always the burdens that we have to overcome. We want them to, for the, for that North side, just accept whatever they, they can get. But before proceeding to meet with any more businesses, I reached out to the nonprofit organizations which had, had and were in the process of submitting an application.
You'll need to wrap up your comments.
Which was eligible to, to, under the current tiers policies and rules. And I thought that, and though that was the case, other board members and staff, so I recruited Theo, Evelyn, and Ralph to create a resource to educate the North side business community, to utilize the opportunity following the meeting. We have started a momentum to completing this.
Thank you very much for your comments, Tony.
I mean, you took time away from me. Dale stood up here for five minutes.
And I've given you more.
So, let me finish up. In closing, my position is that we have an area that is in great need of revitalization and needs the whole community working together to bring it back to life. If we want to change where nonprofits are not eligible, that's your prerogative. But right now, they are eligible, and we had a major supermajority approved from the tiers board. It would be a disservice to them and to the board for you to deny what is right for this process.
Thank you very much.
My name is Sarah Negavetich. I'm at 3310 Cumberland Drive. Before I start, I'd like to say I appreciate if I can make my comments without interruption so I can have my full time. First, I'd like to say that I am opposed to the egregious change of the nature and purchase, or purpose of the agenda item. You have robbed your citizens and the general public of the opportunity to have their voices heard by changing the nature of the agenda item. In recent weeks, there's been a lot of discussion and heated debate over whether nonprofit entities should be eligible for tiers project funding. On one side of the coin, some have argued that since nonprofit organizations don't pay taxes, they shouldn't be able to receive that funding. The other side argues that a rising tide lifts all ships, and investment in nonprofits can positively impact other organizations and businesses in our community. In all of this discussion, the focus has been entirely on the economic impact of the tiers funds to our community. But I'd like to remind the city council of the exact mission of the tiers program, quoted directly from the city website. "The Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, or tiers, was created in 2006 to preserve the short and long-term integrity of the economic and social investment in the designated area and to encourage additional new projects within that area." Allow me to read that again. "The mission is to preserve the economic and social investment in our communities. It's quite clear that those who established the mission of tiers fully understood that there is more to building a strong community than just a robust economy. They understood that a city or a zone is more than just the sum of its parts, and that a strong social network was just as important as economic strength. While it's true that nonprofits don't pay taxes in the same way that a traditional business does, it is also true that they more than make up for that with their social and economic investment in this city that we all love. Nonprofit organizations here in San Angelo do everything, from feeding and housing our homeless neighbors, caring for those with substance abuse disorders, to creating art and beautifying our parks. Nonprofits play a tremendous role in making San Angelo a city we can all be proud of. Today's debate is if nonprofit organizations should be allowed to apply for tiers funding." But it really isn't a debate. The mission is clear. In order to allow for social investment, nonprofit organizations must be allowed to apply for tiers funding. The voice of the city, they're right here today, and I'd ask you to listen to them.
I'm going to be reading this for somebody. My name is Craig Myers, and I am a resident of Single Member District 4. There are three irregularities. The first irregularity was the abandonment of the protocol and best practices by which meetings are conducted in all cases. And this agenda item in question was a proposal for funding that was to be judged strictly by the standards given from the city council to the tiers board and any ruling or statutes that govern the issues at hand. The existing law, which was the only standard to consider this issue, clearly states that the nonprofit in the North tiers zone were entitled to apply for the funding to be treated the same as the other applicants. In every incidence, due diligence, due diligence determined if the applicant had met all the existing standards. The board recommended was approval. The city discussed, discussion was introduced with a lengthy presentation about displeasures with the existing law. This was out of order because the only standard to be considered was the existing rule, not what they were discussing. Not, not one city council person presented a single flaw in the proposal, except it did not meet the standard that did not exist at all anyway, and was not appropriate for the discussion. The applicant were denied due process, and any public comment, speaking, or feelings was not present at the time. The second issue is that the adherence to the legal and accepted standards. A citizen does not have the right to pick and choose which law to obey, neither does the city council members. If you want a different statute, you should, you should have it changed, but until you do that, you are bound by oath and ethics to abide by the current standards. In an examination of the video of the meeting, we showed that almost all the discussion related to the items, items not related to the agenda items. The third is regards the lack of the presence of the tiers board. The city council has legal right to override any decision of the board. However, members were recruited in good faith, which the charge, which the charge that they would do carefully and due diligence in dealing with the businesses and grants for the tiers. It was evidenced that by the discussion and lack of discussion of the actual agenda item, that the city council had either no interest nor a knowledge of the actual agenda item. The board did. They did their work, and it should be honored, unless there is a specific reason under the mandate that they were given, that they had no flawed opinion. For this reason, I would recommend, I would respectfully request that the city council revisit the Gessnerme proposal using the rules and procedures that were operative at the time of the original.
Thank you.
Presentation, thank you.
You read that for Craig Myers.
I did.
Did you want to make your own, because you read it for him, you're, I would allow you, obviously, to make your own comments. So, they would, go ahead and state your name and your single member district and make your comments.
Okay, my name is Evelyn Smith, Single Member District 5. My name is Evelyn Smith, single-member district five. I understand what you all are talking about when you said that the nonprofit organization does not put any tax. We don't pay taxes. You don't put anything back in it. So the tiers is for the businesses who pay taxes to put it back in so you can raise their taxes. But what we're trying to say is that, yeah, the business can fix a beautiful building, okay? But if the people don't stop, then what's going to happen to that business? And I know you all know, I'm going to speak for myself, when I go out of town and I go into an area that's a nice building, but the area doesn't look nice, I'm going somewhere else. And that's what's going on with the tiers program. You'd be wasting your money if you give funding to a business and nobody stops there. So what if the people doesn't support the business? And the business have to shut down or close? So where is the profit in that? You have to beautify the area. Everybody has to work together. If you want to support the business, then that's a good way to do that. And the other thing is that when the nonprofit get the funds, the funds aren't going directly to them. It's an indirect impact investment, but the money goes back to the business. They get the beautification, but the business gets to work, like the windows, they put the doors on, and that kind of thing. And my other question was, when you open it up to nonprofit organizations, what were your reasons for opening? I don't understand now that you want to shut it down. What was your purpose in opening it in the first place and opening it up to us? I mean, we wouldn't be here today if that was your idea to open it. It was your idea to separate the north and south. We had nothing to do with that. We're just trying to be public citizens and actually helping the community and help the business even grow. Businesses don't even want to come to that area because you said you want business to open up. Business won't even come because of the way the area looked. So my question is, why did you open it up in the first place to nonprofit organizations? And what did you expect? What is significant economic impact? And what did you expect? I don't understand.
So Evelyn, what I'll tell you is, the nonprofits in the north zone were left in here by mistake. And I did that in a council meeting in 2017. Brenda made a motion to exclude nonprofits in the south zone. I thought there would be investment companies that would work for retirement communities and had been said that would be the only risk. It wasn't for anything else. She made a motion to not allow nonprofits to get tiers money in the south zone. That was the only motion that was made, and because of that motion, the north zone was left open. Now, what I want to point out was that was probably six years ago. And in that six years it's been here, we've never approved any money for nonprofits. They're in there, in my opinion, by accident because it is a tax investment zone. I drive Martin Luther King maybe three, four, or five times a day. I drove it this morning and counted the nonprofits. But what we also have to look at is what, if you're talking about revitalizing a community, if you look at where the nonprofit is, you also have to look at the surrounding area that you would think would grow with it. Well, if that's residential, that's not going to grow. I mean, you're going to improve it for sawed-on-one, but you're not going to expand the commercial retail, all right? And that's, you know, in our program, and Sarah did a good job of pointing some of that out, but I want to point out, it's in our own literature, you know, we're looking to expand the commercial and retail side of our business. So it's in there, in my opinion, by accident. It should have been removed back in 2017. The fact that nobody has even brought this to the point, you know, in six years, kind of shame on us, shame on everybody for not addressing it and cleaning it up sooner. So for that, I personally apologize. But what I will tell you is, we're looking to be consistent with how we handle this. And I have had people come up to me and say, "I didn't pay tax dollars for you to decide where my nonprofit funds go. If I want to tie it to a church, or I want to tie it to a nonprofit, I want that to be my decision, not a city decision." And I have heard that countless times the past couple of weeks. And you know what? I have to respect that position also.
Thank you. I understand. But...
Thank you very much for coming forward.
I don't think you answered my question because I understand what you're saying, but when I came back here in July of last year, I asked, "Were there any tiers funds for nonprofit organizations?" You told me no. But then you opened it back up August the 16th of last year, and you approved nonprofit organizations to come back on the board, regardless of what happened way back in the day. You reopened it up. So I assume there was a reason why you reopened it back up to us, the nonprofits, again, in that you were expecting some kind of change, economic, significant economic impact. So I still don't understand why you reopened it back up, and now you want to shut it down? Because you knew in the first place that we didn't pay taxes, so why you keep standing on that? We're making a significant impact to the community. And yes, there are some residential areas on Martin Luther King, but there are also a lot of businesses around in that area. And they, people drive through, and the businesses don't get the support because of the way the area looks. So can you answer a little clearly?
Thank you.
Why did you reopen it again? That's my bottom line.
We didn't reopen it. The policy was always there.
It was approved on August 16th because I know it was brought back up again, and it was approved again on August 16th. And I called the secretary for this board, and she was going to send me the paperwork and everything when it was approved again on August 16th. So it was brought back up, rediscussed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're not going to answer my question?
I don't have an answer for you. I don't have the information.
Okay, well, I suggest you all, before you shut it down today, that you go back and revisit that. Why did you reopen? We all wouldn't be here now.
Tom?
Why did you reopen that again?
Evelyn, you were sitting back there in the fourth row, and you were sitting there, and you asked me, you said, "I go to church, can a church ask for these funds?"
Yes.
And I said, "In the north zone, nonprofits are not excluded." Now, I don't think that guarantees funding, but they're excluded in the south zone. When they went back out and took all the brochures and everything, it was not bringing it back up to policy. It was current policy. Everybody just restated it. It's not like we went back and reintroduced it as a new policy. It was the same old policy. It's been there. So I don't want you to think that anybody here did anything wrong. I remember speaking to you specifically about that and saying, "It's been in there since 2017."
You did. But why, August the 16th, you revoted again with the tiers program? Because I was working with the tiers program, asking, "When is this going to be on the books? When can we put in our application?" And August 16th, it said that, "Yes, you can put in your application now."
You could have put in an application only back to 2017.
Okay. What was the significant economic impact you were looking for that you're denying us now?
I think they were looking for commercial and retail establishments up and down north Chadburn and Martin Luther King.
I'd just like to suggest that you guys revisit this again before you actually just shut the door, you know? There is some ways that we all can work together, and I understand that you want reinvestment. And I believe if you work with us and a nonprofit organization, the whole area would be reinvested.
Thank you very much. We would bring the microphone to you, but it's not movable. Our apologies.
Good morning, Mayor Gunner and City Council. I am Dedra Butler, and I am a former tiers north board member. I'm a former past president of the NAACP. And the stance of, I'm here on behalf of the president of the NAACP, Michelle Grooms-Reed. And she wanted to let you all know that the stance of Unit 6219 is in support of Gassetimi Baptist Church getting funding. And mainly, also, she respects the work the city council does and would hope that the city council will reconsider. Now, one of the things that, listening to all of the conversation, there've been some great conversation. I kind of hung on the comments that Mayor Gunner voiced about it being such an emotional issue. And I would hope, the comment that you made, Mayor Gunner, that maybe we need to eliminate the tiers board altogether. That, having been on the tiers board and seen the work, the beautification, the positive impact that tiers funding has done to many businesses in the north and the south, in my opinion, and this is not NAACP, this is Dedra Butler, I would like that kind of emotion to be out of it. Our job here, and I believe you all's job, is yes, to allow the citizens of San Angelo to come forth and voice their opinions. And that's what I think we're doing. And yes, we ought to be able to do that without all of the emotion and without, if things don't go my way, maybe we ought to just eliminate it. That bothers me.
Thank you, Dedra. Good morning.
I'm William McClendon, single-member district six. Want to talk about the borders for the tiers. The south side starts around Fourth Street and ends around Washington Street. And I've paid my bills downtown. I drive all over town. I've never seen a lot of work done south downtown. So most of the south money is going downtown. Why is that? And why is the border stopping at Washington Street when the north side goes from Third Street up to 29th Street? There are a lot of more businesses south of Washington that needs help. You're not even looking at them. But the money is staying downtown. And then when you pull money from the north, it goes downtown. So why is that?
I will say that back in 2006, when the tiers program was approved by city council, they had to turn into the state at that point in time, the map. And that map is created based off of multiple issues. For example, it could only have X amount of residential. It had, there were requirements in terms of creating that tiers zone. So it was done relative to the regulations attached to tiers, and that zone was created and turned into the state at that point in time. That was the district approved.
Why is residential considered when it's supposed to be for businesses?
It isn't considered. And that was because one of the, to better explain that, there was a point in time when we were asked to extend the southern, the south's border further south. And the comment that came back was, "We can't do that because of the high, the larger number of residential in that corridor." And you can only have, you know, I probably ought to have Rick describe it better than me. I'm sorry.
It's impossible to totally exclude residential because you can't do this kind of stuff. So you're only allowed to have so much residential that's geared toward commercial. You have to try to avoid those residential areas as best you can without having this tiering mandate line.
Right. So it's geared towards commercial, and you have commercial businesses down there, so why not just do it? Why, I don't understand.
Why not do what?
Why don't we just get rid of north and south and just have this one tiers?
That's what I said earlier.
Yeah. And then extend the borders. And let's be fair, because really, all of the south money is going downtown. And the bad thing about it is, if we do drop the borders, it's still going to go downtown.
So that's the north side's, a lot of communication they go, there's a bunch of people on the north side that don't want to make it one uniform one because they think only the south will get it. We don't seem to think that's true. But it's whoever applies for it and gets approved through the tiers board.
So the money that's being pulled from the north to the south, where is that going?
Well, let me go, you know, we did, let me just recap a little bit of what we did last year was, we believed that we needed to have town hall meetings at that point because the south, the tiers board had recommended that we do away with the north versus the south. And I was very opposed to that. And so what we did was, we held town hall meetings at the bus station. How many did we hold?
Three.
Three town hall meetings to open up the discussion about whether we should do away with the north versus the south, and what we needed to do to encourage more businesses to apply for the tiers money in the north. And that was, as I said, three different town hall meetings to open up this discussion. I believe strongly in the tiers concept. I do. And I think it would be sad if we did away with it. On the other hand, we keep coming up with north versus the south policies and the lack of consistency between the north and the south, and whether, in fact, we should have one or two. And we voted, I can't remember the month, the week, but we, as a council, voted then to not combine the north and the south. That, in fact, we believe strongly that the south should remain the south and the north should remain the north. And that was, again, I don't remember, September, maybe October of last year when that came forward, and the council said, "No, we're going to maintain the two different districts." Because we were nervous that, because the south kept saying, "We don't have enough money. We don't have enough money. People keep applying for the money. We don't have enough money. We can't approve those projects." And so they wanted the northern money. And at that point, we discussed and we voted as a council to maintain the north versus the south. So I, you know, we're answering your comments, and I don't want that to interfere with how much time you have, so I'm kind of opening this up for broader than we've been allowed.
I think we're answering his questions. We're trying to get his questions answered.
Okay. So I just want to make sure you feel like you're having an opportunity to voice your concerns and your issues without the time limit impacting your comments, okay? Because I don't want to do that.
All right. One other thing is, today, your professionalism is much better than it was last time I was up here. And, you know, all that was brought out to the city and throughout the state, because all this went out statewide. So that's much better where y'all are conducting business today. Thank you.
Ma'am?
We appreciate very much. Yes, Larry?
Until recently, tiers in the north was at a dead stop. Nothing was happening out there, and money was piling up. And only through the efforts of this council, as well as a number of other people who have been advertising this program in the north, is it beginning to get some traction. Those of you who regularly attend these may remember that about a month ago, four enterprises applied for tiers money, and they got it. And we were as pleased as punch that somebody is making some move on this stuff. So I know that your interest is in the nonprofits, but believe me, this council is very much in favor of dipping into that $2 million and spending it on the north.
And also, based off of the comments from the last meeting about improving the district so it was as nice as the south, we ask, we, the council, ask the tiers board to reconsider or to look at reinvestment in, because we're getting ready to do Chadburn Street from Fourth Street, no, where does it start?
19th Street.
From 19th Street?
To 29th.
To 29th. Then we ask that in, because the city was going to be working on Chadburn, those blocks, that we relook at the lighting, we relook at park benches, we look at all those things to help make it a much better environment. Because you keep talking about, if it's nice, people will come. If it's not so nice, they won't come. We ask that that be considered at the tiers board meeting, and it was turned down. Because we know that those monies, $2 million in that northern tiers money, could be used for streetscape improvements in the north, making it a much better environment, including lighting, including benches, including sidewalks. That was what we had asked. We were denied that.
My name is Angela Haywood. I am in Lucy's district, and she and the city manager have been helpful on a couple of other issues that I won't go into today. I am standing here because I have listened to you speak to how you feel and what you think that the tiers means and that mission statement. The mission statement... The mission statement clearly states investment and social. Well, if you live on the North Side, it's not that much social. We don't even have a grocery store on our side unless you consider that to be Walmart. Who wants to go to Walmart to get fresh vegetables? You can't do it. Chadburn and Martin Luther King Boulevard are the only streets that this board has decided to try and do something with. There are a lot of other streets that need to be revitalized and to make it more beautiful for the people that live over there. But it is hard for us on the North to come to the city to get anything done because we don't feel like you are listening to us. Now, the tiers board was charged with, based on the mission statement, which included nonprofits, whether or not it was a mistake or not, is still in there. Based on that criteria, the current mission statement, there are two projects that are on the table that all of a sudden, the city has moved the line again. We've met your criteria based on the current mission statement, and then the line keeps getting moved. And then you are stand, you are here saying that you want more businesses to come to the North area. Well, why would a business come to the North area if you keep moving the line? We are asking you to operate in good faith. We put you there to operate in good faith. Good faith means stop moving the line. Just stop moving the line. I mean, you want, we want our community, the entire community, to be beautiful for everyone that's coming in. We've got a new highway coming in. There are other businesses, but they're all going to the, to other parts of town. The South wants the tiers funding from the North because we have Walmart. There are other little businesses there that are providing tax dollars to the city. And we don't feel as though we are being heard by the city council. Thank you.
Yes. Go ahead, Tom.
Oh, Angela, I appreciate your words there. I, I think what, well, first things first, there's a real cool little grocery right beside Icon Cinema. It's got fresh vegetables. I go there all the time. So, there, well, but, so let me go. I think what's happened here is everybody keeps bringing up the word "social," and they think that commercial and retail don't have social, and they think that nonprofits are the only people that have social. Commercial and retail, no, I, and I don't mean to correct.
Angela, why don't you come back up to the microphone so you, you can answer, the two of you can have a conversation together.
Well, I know the owner of the grocery store, and he's going to call me and say, "Hey, how come you didn't say I had a grocery store there on Nineteenth?"
I realize that that grocery store is there. However, that grocery store does not necessarily have what everybody wants. I mean, it is specific to a, a specific culture of business, of, of customers, okay? I don't always want to go and have chili reanos. I, I mean, I just don't want to do that. I mean, I would like to have fresh vegetables that don't, that aren't just for one specific culture. Now, granted, I go to the store. My grandmother went to the store. You know, I know how to cook that, that culture's food, as do other cultures' food. However, there's Icon, there is the grocery store. Further up the street, there is a subway that you don't really know if it's going to be open because one minute it's open and the next minute it's closed.
You're exactly right on that one.
You know, I mean, and then you've got the chicken farm up there. You don't know, I mean, come on. What, what other businesses are we going to have? When is the city council going to start investing in the North area? Because it's downtown. You cut off all of the businesses from Sharpen on when you put that, the Loop 306 here. I mean, I'm not trying to be rebellious or anything like that. I'm not trying to, but I'm very passionate about this. I grew up in this town. I went to Central. I went to college here. You know, I mean, the North deserves the same attention that you put into the rest of the city. I mean, looking at what you guys have done, you have rezoned pretty much all of the North area for commercial. You've got a, a steel plant that produces nothing but dirt behind my house. That's all I get in my house is dirt and noise from that steel plant.
I mean, I don't, we have to stay on topic here and get that. So, I know the owner of the grocery store. I know he would have said, "How come you didn't say, 'Hey, there's a grocery store.'" So, I didn't mean that to offend you. If it did, I apologize. Your main point there was what's social? And that the tiers money is for social. And I want to say, commercial and retail also do social business. It's not the only understanding that only nonprofits do social. I get your point. I just say, I've heard that brought up by several people today, as that's the reason a nonprofit should get funding because of the social. Commercial and retail do that also, whether you go to Palmer Feat or you go to Icon or all those things. And I just, I think somebody, some people have exploited that content off the website.
Well, I mean, the reason why I brought up the social aspect of it is because the mayor said that nonprofits don't do anything for the community.
No, that is not what the mayor said.
Well, basically, I'm paraphrasing.
No, you've totally misphrased incorrectly.
Okay.
I said they add a lot of value to our community.
They may add value, but they, you said that they don't add tax dollars. However, I beg to differ. Because you've got Wesley Chapel that is across the street that provides value to the city because they feed the homeless every day. They feed the homeless every day. The homeless are over there every day. That's something that the city does not have to deal with because you have nonprofits that are trying to move along and get the people the assistance that they have. We are trying to work with you. We are asking you to work with us. And then you want, if, if the tiers board was put as a one unit, single unit, that $2 million is not going to be spent in the tiers, in the North area. And everybody in the North agrees with that because it's going to be downtown. I mean, I know that you want to rebourefy Chadburn Street and do this to MLK and all of that, but look at it as a whole. It's not just the people downtown. The people who come here from out of town have to drive to the North just to get to the Coliseum. How is that making it presentable for them?
I agree with you. It's the reason I ask that we consider using that money to improve your district. I believe strongly that we needed to reinvest many of those dollars into the Chadburn Street program to, because I do believe better lighting. I do believe in, in improving Chadburn and changes the neighborhood.
Madam Mayor, it is not just the lighting that needs to be changed.
No, I know. There were other pieces of it, okay? It was a whole program that Shane Kelton presented to the tiers board.
Well, I, I would like to request that instead of the board voting on this item today, that you table it and let's get together with the people who are here and are passionate about this issue to try and work through something that will be a compromise for all people on both sides. Instead of just tabling it down right now, and, and you have the community on the North Side that are fighting tooth and nail just to live on that side of town.
We had three town hall meetings last year, of which the attendance was very weak. There were not lots of people who attended.
Madam Mayor, I didn't even know that there were three town hall meetings last year because it's not very publicized. Plus, you know, it is hard for the people on the North Side to even come to city council because they have to work. This is the only city that I know of, that I know of, that has a city council meeting very early in the morning wherein members of the community can't come in and provide input because you're having it in the daytime instead of in later in the evening. I get everybody has things that they want to do, but how are you going to have your constituency weigh in on, on choices for the city if they can't even come because they can't take off work?
Thank you. Further public comment?
Theodore Boone, and I'm a representative of the bridge on Martin Luther King Drive. I sit, I listen, I understand. I want to thank the city for some things you have done. I went back to the building and I saw the sidewalks. I went back to the building and I saw some lights, but not enough lights. And if not now, then when? If not right now with $2 million available to start a process? If not now, when? We have a plan to make a difference in the area, and we're asking for crumbs. We're asking for crumbs. Two organizations, one totally nonprofit, another one a church, both contributing to the economic, social, and spiritual aspects of what's going on in our community. And the group that we presented our proposal to was, again, selected by you. If they believed that we were good enough for $75,000, why should you object? Wait, please.
I'm just smacking my lips.
Yes, ma'am.
They're dry, sorry.
But I'm asking that question because we're not waiting for someone to hand out something to us. We have begun the process. We have work going on right now. But when it was said that someone was going to do something on the outside, we were already doing something on the inside. So, we came because an opportunity to receive, yes, I understand about all the agencies that will give grants, but they don't give it to everybody. Most of those grants are given for specific social, as well as health reasons, but it don't trickle down to the places sometime where the funds are needed. I don't want to operate out of passion today. I want to operate out of purpose. We've begun a process to impact the Martin Luther King Corridor. It's more than 15 businesses down there. There's more than 15 nonprofit organization. We have a cluster of nonprofit organizations in a five-block area that are operative. We have a building that we're wanting to open up as a hub to help one another in that area to experience fulfillment. I'm an ex-employee of Verizon. I'm a pastor who's retired. I believe that I'm on a mission, and my mission is to make a difference. My mission is not just to make a difference, but we have so much conflict in our community that at some point in time, we have to stop thinking about ourselves and start thinking about one another. And so, I think it's time to begin to invest in healthy relationships. It can start right here. It can start right here because the, the $2 million is already allocated for the area. I would like to see a, a committee come together and look at how can we make this an attractive place, this street, an attractive place that will cause the people, not only in the community, of the neighborhood that they're in, feel good about someone is investing in change that will be good for everyone.
Thank you very much. Further public comment? Go ahead.
If not now, when?
Thank you, Theodore.
I'm Stan Jointon. I live on Paladuro Drive. I'm not sure which district that is. It shows you how ignorant I am politically. I'm a member of NAACP Unit 6219, but I'm not speaking for them today. My sympathies are very much with the speakers who have spoken about the needs of the North Side. And Reverend Craig Myers is one of my personal heroes. I very much think that the tiers money ought to be available to nonprofits. But one thing troubles me, and that is the issue of separation of church and state. When you're allocating money to churches, that's using state money to support religion, which I personally think is a danger to our democracy. So, I would hope that, that the board and the council will take that into account in their deliberations. Thank you.
Very much. Further public comment? We're not trying to cut anybody off short. I'm just trying to make sure we live by the rules, and I've broken them multiple times already. So, my apologies. Please get your comments out.
Good morning. My name is Sydney Timmer. I am in Ms. Gonzalez's district. I did want to address a couple of things that have come up. Councilmember Thompson, I know you, you were very adamant that, yes, commercial businesses also contribute to the social environment, and I don't think anyone here would deny that at all. I just think that the economic impact of our nonprofits keeps getting thrown away. Yes, property taxes, we all understand that. But I just want, I mean, you heard it yourself. My agency has contributed over $8 million into the city and back into the pockets of our neighbors that work and play and live in all parts of San Angelo. Galley CDC builds affordable housing, and I think affordable gets thrown around a lot, but it is, it is affordable housing to where those neighbors are not paying more than 30% of their whole income to go straight to bills. And they're not having to make those hard decisions of food or lights or whatever the case is. La Esperanza provides medical care to low-income families so that they can work, their kids can go to school. That is contributing to the economic status of the city of San Angelo. Workforce Solutions is also a nonprofit that works hard to put people in jobs that also fuels the city. Also, MHMR and West Texas Counseling Guidance help people learn to cope with their, with what's going on so that they can function as working, playing citizens of San Angelo. And those are just, just a few. There are over 200, possibly close to 300 nonprofits in San Angelo, and all of them impact the city, not only socially, but financially as well. Also, I, I, I do want to mention that if you're wanting to make this, have people go out and, and go to these different parts, having a nice front, a new location, does wonders. Our organization recently made a change in, from going from a, a dark dungeon where people are going to have to come and ask for help in the secret, to a place that has windows and natural light. It has done wonders. It has helped fight that stigma of asking for help and going to places. It has really contributed in a number of factors. And I do want to end saying that the tiers board, the tiers board, the people that you entrusted with a lot of this, has still not recommended eliminating nonprofits from consideration. Your decisions and opinions that we've heard from you today, you're not listening to those that you've trusted to give you information. Those opinions and those thoughts that you've been sharing are solely based on your own because you are not listening to your constituents and you are not listening to the tiers board and their recommendation for you.
The tiers board asked us to do away with the North versus the South. So just so you know, those are the same people, and we, as a council, said no. We want to maintain the North versus the South.
I understand that. I still think that it just needs to come back in.
Thank you. I'm going to conclude public comment at this point in time. Theodore, you've already spoken once, my dear. So at this point in time, there's a motion on the floor. There's a second. We've had public comment. We are now going to take a vote. The motion on the floor is to, make sure I say this correctly, that the motion on the floor is to eliminate nonprofits for consideration in the North and in the South zones. Is that correct? That's the motion on the floor. I'm going to go one by one and ask for the vote. Tommy?
No.
You do not support the motion on the floor.
I do not support the motion on the floor.
Tom?
A vote in favor of the motion on the floor.
Harry?
I'm in favor of the motion on the floor.
Mayor, I'm in favor of the motion on the floor. Lucy?
Not.
Karen?
No.
Larry?
Not.
So the motion is four to two, nonprofit consideration. Is that?
Four three.
Four three. So it is Harry, Tom, myself, in support of eliminating nonprofits. And the four of Tommy, Lucy, Karen, and Larry all vote in support of allowing nonprofits to receive tiers funding. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I just want to make sure this is correct. I'm not sure. Larry, is that what you wanted?
I would like the current policy to remain.
Meaning the North gets nonprofit and the South doesn't?
Correct.
That's not the motion on the floor. Karen?
Mayor, but hold on.
Wait a minute. This is a problem.
So the other one, so we're already taking a vote?
Wait a minute. I think people are confused, and we'll work through this. Let's just get everybody on the same page, and we'll make sure it's done correctly.
So we've already taken a vote, so at this point, it is up for, I mean, he can make a motion at this point, correct?
Yeah, so the motion failed, and we could take additional motions now.
So now we will entertain a new motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we retain the current policy.
So the current policy is to allow the nonprofits in the North to apply and in the South to not apply.
I second that motion.
Lucy seconds that motion. It is now open for public comment. Now, because it's a new motion, you may come forward and add new comment.
I want to make a suggestion. What has been approved has been approved under what has been established. Approve it. Let us get started. Get a council, look at what the needs are, and let's together make a difference. But what has been approved, it doesn't need to go back through an agency that has already approved it. They have approved it, and they're recommending it to you. And we're going to say, let's that be a starting point, and then get your council and decide what you're going to do going forward. That's my suggestion.
Thank you, Theodore. Further public comment? No further public comments, so, yes, go ahead, Tom.
Just to be clear, so nothing changes, so everything, the existing rules for how to deal with nonprofits still apply. So that comes as individual items that they will have to seek approval for individually, and then code to the tiers board, and then from the tiers board come to us.
And council would still have the right to vote or deny, but?
So I think a vote here to keep it, keep the policy as is is helpful because since tiers has made a recommendation, it's clear what the outcome of that is for the minutes and the record and all that. But I mean, if no motion passes either way today, it would still say the same.
I just need everybody to be clear. I don't want somebody to leave here thinking I'm automatically included, because they're not, and that misconception doesn't need to leave here because that could hurt somebody's feelings really bad.
It still comes with a final vote to council on anything presented to tiers board for approval. It then comes to council. Council can choose to support or deny, even if it does say nonprofits can be applied. So council has a final vote. But that being said, I think what I have heard is that what you would like to do, and we'll do this again, as we had three town hall meetings last fall season, to open up the conversation for ideas from the North about what they would like to see happen in terms of improvements in the tiers district with the available funds. So we will make an announcement at a future city council meeting. We'll figure out how to make sure everybody's aware of the meeting. As I said before, we had three meetings last fall season. With the exception of the individuals who are on city council or on the tiers board, few public people attended the meeting, so we need an opportunity for all of you to show up and add your comments, because we did three of them. And we protected the North, this last town hall meetings. We protected the North and said, you get to keep your funds. We're not going to consolidate them with the South. And we voted to do that. Now let's get back together again, need your input to decide how best to improve using those tiers funds. Okay, Lucy?
Yes, ma'am. That's okay. No, I was just going to say, ask y'all. Okay, so what you're saying, Larry, is that you want to leave policy as is, correct?
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure that?
Meaning the North maintains nonprofit opportunities and the South does not?
Yes.
Opportunities, not guarantees.
I know. I said opportunities. Is everybody clear on that?
Yes.
I have a comment, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Please.
It's been correctly pointed out that we serve at your will and that we should be responsible to that commitment. And I think if you've been following this discussion over the past year, in fact, you'll note that this council has indeed done that very thing. And so, given that we need your help to rally your community, there are some of us who, last year, walked door to door in your neighborhood, carrying flyers, speaking to business owners, and asking for participation, which we didn't really get. So now we are answering you again. Yes, we are here, and we are listening, and we are trying. So some people have said we have not been told that there were meetings. We have not been told that there was an opportunity to represent, but there was. So going forward, we would ask you, please, to do what you can to speak to us, to ask for our help before we end up here again. We want to do the right thing for the city, for your neighborhood, and that is a firm commitment. But you must be responsible as well.
Angela made a great point about we need businesses to support the district in terms of types of businesses. I will say the following, that most of the funds that are in the tiers fund in the North were contributed because, number one, of Walmart, which is a vacant piece of property that was purchased and Walmart was built on it. So it funded the northern tiers first and foremost. Number two, many of the businesses and the majority, again, large dollar amount that has gone into the tiers fund are those businesses that are on 87 North of 306. Their investment north of 306 has contributed a lot of money to the tier zone. And there's some additional businesses looking at doing that as well. It might not be directly in your neighborhood, but the amount of development on North 87 over the past 10 years has been tremendous. In fact, in the past five years, has been tremendous. Does it solve all issues? Does it hit all everybody's wish list? Probably not. But if you look back on what North 87 looked like five years ago, you'll see a dramatic difference. Dramatic. Again, it doesn't answer all issues, doesn't do all the things that you need it to do. But with that said, we really want to make sure. We will announce town hall meetings. We need a lot of participation. We need a lot of input. It's your chance to help us make the right decision. And we will have Shane Kelton there to, once again, explain what he believed was the correct strategy for improving the North Chavern Corridor to make sure that there was plenty of lighting, that the sidewalks were good, that the things that you needed to enhance your community. We want him there to present that to you, so you see what his vision was for that. We know it's a corridor. We know they go from the South to the North and the North to the South. It's one big corridor, and we need it to look like one big community. Lucy?
I just wanted to make a comment, and that's to thank each one of y'all for coming out this morning and stating what you really felt, what you wanted in your community. That means a lot when you stay unified together and you stand together and you say, we know that this is the way it is, but this is what we're asking, and you wanted your voice to be heard, and I want you to know that it was. Thank you so much for coming.
All right, so, okay, there's a motion. Was there a second on that? I've lost track already. Sorry. Motion and a second. Public comment has been had. We will now take a vote. So those in favor of leaving the North tiers available for nonprofits and taking away or not allowing the Southern tiers to fund nonprofits, is that the correct motion on the floor?
Maintaining the present policy, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, Larry, your vote?
Aye.
Yes. Karen?
Aye.
Lucy?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
I can support this. Aye.
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 Motion passes six one. We'll move on to the next agenda item, First Reading and Public Hearing of an Ordinance Approving Standards of Care for Recreation Summer Camp Held at Recreation Centers for Ages Five Through Thirteen. Brent Casey, you're on.
Welcome up, Brent.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you again. Good morning, Mayor, council members. Brent Casey, Recreation Manager. So we are, the Recreation Division is required to get a waiver for us to host summer camp every year. One of the requirements for us to get that waiver is for us to get an ordinance approved by city council for standards of care for the recreation programs. The ordinance covers things like the inspections that must be done for our facilities, registration requirements, training for staff, all the way down to suspected abuse and what must be done if that is brought to our attention by any staff member. So because we have so many people looking for safe and affordable summer areas for their kids to go so they can continue to go to work, then we're requesting that council approve the First Reading of the Ordinance of Standards of Care for Recreation Programs.
You want to read that?
The whole thing.
Are there any changes? Are there any changes?
Yeah.
Between last year and this year?
No, sir. No changes.
Want to approve?
Harry made a motion to approve, seconded by?
Second, Mayor.
Tommy. Public comment. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. We will move to item D, First Reading and Pub, yes, First Reading and Public Hearing of an Ordinance Amending the Budget for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2022 and Ending September 30, 2023 for Projects. Tina, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Tina Deersky, Director of Finance. I have a couple of, I think, three budget amendments this morning for you. The first one is to budget for a portion of the proceeds of the short-term debt issue that you approved in a previous council meeting, the $1,995,000. That will be for animal shelter improvements and a traffic signal at Twin Mountain Lane and Nickerbacher Road. This portion is budgeting for everything except the signal because the signal is going to be the next agenda item, and we already have a bid and an actual amount for that. This next one is for the opioid settlement monies that you also have seen in previous council meetings and approved to receive. This is the portion that the city has already received. We are expecting to receive somewhere around $1.4 million total over a number of years through that settlement. But we've decided it's the most conservative way to budget for that since we don't know the actual amount at this time. It's to budget as we receive the funding. And so we are working with police, fire, health department, neighborhood and family services, handful of people internally to kind of bring together what a program would look like and how we could use this under the eligibility requirements. And we'll be bringing that back to you probably sometime in May, so you can kind of see what we could do with the funds that are available.
Sure.
Tina, what was it that you were, I know that you were talking about having a committee come together, but what exactly can that fund show? I mean, what can we use it for?
There are a number of different things, but a handful of the things that we can use it for would be like training, education, Narcan for fire and police vehicles, Narcan for the general public, just anything that really combats or helps with mental health issues, with opioid addictions and things like that. Mental health issues for police and fire that also deal with these types of incidents. And so there's a whole bunch of different things. It's a 12-page document that we've kind of started, met with police and fire and those other departments yesterday, and we're just kind of getting a conversation going so that we can present something to you to kind of give you ideas on how we can use it.
This isn't the final settlement, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. This is just the first portion. We've been notified so far that we should receive just over $1 million, but the total that they expect over those number of years is about $1.4. Okay, and this is to budget for audit fees for hotel occupancy tax fund. We just are finishing up our first round from last year of hotel audits. That yielded about $240,000 in additional revenue to the hotel tax fund. So we are looking at going out and using an additional $40,000 to further that audit process with about 20 more hotels as well as short-term rentals. So we'll be?
How about Airbnbs?
That'll be included under the short-term rental audit, yes, ma'am. And that's all I have for you as far as the budget amendment.
Do we need a motion for approval?
To approve.
Second.
Sounds like I have a motion and a second all the way down that left-hand side. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We are now going back to what was item G in the consent agenda. That item is as follows. Consider warning OP-02-23 traffic signal installation at Twin Mountain Drive and Nickerbacher Road to Willis Electric Company LP in the amount of $269,071, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all required documents and amending the fiscal year 2022-23 budget for the corresponding expenditure and revenue from the short-term debt proceeds.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This item was pulled from consent because of that last statement right there to accommodate the budget amendment that pays for the installation, the purchase and installation of this signalized intersection. The city went out, procured bids through its normal bidding process. We had one respondent, and the pricing actually came in under our OPC, so we're very excited about that. $269,071 is what we're asking for your approval to spend this morning.
And the timeframe on installing it?
We'll work with the vendor on that, but we expect to have this installed within the next 90 to 120 days.
Motion for approval. Motion by Tommy. Seconded by who? Larry. Public comment. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved, seven zero. There's no closed session, so we will follow, do item A.
Are we going to do that?
Oh. Oh.
Nominate E.
Oh, sorry, missed that. I'm riding over, sorry, I missed that. So item E is Discussion and Possible Action, Nominating Citizens to an ADA Advisory Committee, and Heather, you're on for that.
This is just the advisory committee that we ask citizens to?
Talk louder and in the microphone, dear.
Okay, to volunteer for. At this time, we have seven members of the community that have volunteered. So this would just be your approval to put those individuals on the committee. We do want to make note that we are leaving the option to add additional members to the committee to make sure that we get representation from all areas to be represented.
So this is just the initial group of individuals who volunteer to be on this, and it will still be open for additional people, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval? Or discussion on it? Okay, a motion for approval, second?
Second.
Seconded by Lucy. Any public comment?
Henry again with number three. A couple of things that I wanted to say about the committee. This is a process that's supposed to happen, and so I have a question that I would like to ask. One, how was that publicized? One, how was that publicized? To be on the committee?
Well, basically, I think it was done, if I'm not mistaken, Kim, at our town hall meeting the other night. That number one. So I think a lot of the names came up from that meeting. Okay? I don't know, have we posted it anywhere else?
No.
But what we do know is this is just the original committee. It is not closed to these people, so we can go out and do a better job of advertising, I don't know if you want to call it advertising, but promoting the opportunity for citizens to be a part of this committee.
So how do we know that all disabilities are represented or not represented if we don't have any sort of application process or vetting process?
So this is not a statutory requirement as far as this committee is being established by the city council. It is a committee at this point, in conversations with you and meetings that we've had, that we said that we need to commit this, we need to get this committee put in place so we can start getting that input as soon as possible. As expressed a while ago, it can be expanded.
Right.
Again, as far as advertising, it's not a requirement to advertise. I understand where you're coming from, we can definitely do that, but right now, we have this initial committee that volunteers that we can put together to start getting that immediate input.
We would hope, Kim, that the individuals that have already put their names forward is that we can help, we'll utilize them to help us recruit other people that might fill holes that we think are, you know, things that are missing in terms of total representation. So we'll also use the committee to do that.
Mrs. James has also gone out to several agencies for those spots for challenged people that haven't volunteered yet. So it is happening to a degree.
Okay. And so I have a question on that as well. I don't, I mean, I don't disagree with some of the people that are on that list. They actually let me know that they were on that list, but the only town hall announcement that was made is that, hey, if you're interested, just email me, Teresa James. But I also know that Teresa James reached out to specific individuals. So again, my concern is that there's not a process, and it is required by the ADA to make public announcements about anything changing in the ADA coordinator, in the ADA committee, in the ADA situation going on within the city.
I'm not arguing the fact with you, but your opinion on that. So we'll get clarification on that, but my understanding right now is we're following the exact process we need to, to make the appointment for this committee.
So there doesn't need to be an ordinance established?
This isn't like a formal board, like planning commission or anything like that. This is a working committee for the benefit of council, to give them advice and recommendations and serve, you know, at the council's pleasure, so.
It's much like the mayor's police committee that you put together a couple of years back, Mayor, so.
Right, and I understand the significance of it. I mean, that's, I'm not implying, I'm sure some of you probably be happy to hear that, but the concern is that, again, we were told back in November last year that there has to be an ordinance to establish a certain committee like this, and now we're being told in February at your meeting by you and Teresa James that there is not an ordinance, and we're not going to move forward with a committee because we don't know the expectations, even though we provided that all to you, which is extremely frustrating and offending for you to say that Teresa James has done all these great things. Where did she get the information to do those things?
Well, again, we've tried to work in good faith with you. We really have. We've had multiple meetings with you, hoping that we could work together, not as adversaries, but to really work together because we care about making the changes with the ADA committee that we need to. And for some reason, it hasn't clicked in working with you, even with Andrea, and that's disappointing. And I'm going to leave it at that, but again, on our part, we really would love to be able to work with you, not as adversaries, but in a manner to be able to move forward together and help the community.
Well, and I agree, but all that we're asking for is to have a legitimate, publicized and inclusive process before making any votes and decisions on who's going to be on this committee, regardless of if they're a committee, an advisory board, whatever the case may be. Having the city attorney say, hey, just go ahead and email me to a town hall, as the mayor said, everybody who applied, or those seven people, were at the town hall. What about the other 16,000 people living with disabilities? You know, and this committee is extremely important. I think that, I mean, it's one of the first recommendations in October that we asked for was to establish a committee, but we don't mind working with you, but we're finding out updates after I make a public comment, and then I go sit down and everybody wants to share what their thoughts are. Those comments, that information's not being shared via email, the processes aren't being shared via email, we're not being responded to. And again, I'm not even able to share with my outlets, with the disability community, on what the process is to participate. So I just want to express my concerns that you're about to vote on something that really didn't have an established process. And if this is something that's going to save the city from being, you know, play a role, I should say, in saving the city from being sued for hundreds of millions of dollars, I think that there needs to be an established process for that.
This is what I'm talking about. You know, you assume that this is the only reason why we're doing this, and that is wrong. That is completely wrong. So at this point, volunteers that volunteer to be on this committee care a lot about the ADA committee, okay? So what we're doing right now is making a recommendation to the city council to go ahead and move forward with this committee. We can expand upon that committee. We can do a lot more with that, but right now, we'd like to move forward to get input. We've asked you for input in the past when we've had our meetings. What is it that the people are concerned about, you say you can't give us that information? They don't trust you guys. So we need a committee that we can start working with that can start giving us that information. We'd love to be able to start doing the things that we need to, to start improving things for the ADA community.
I have those meeting notes that I'll go ahead and share publicly so everybody can see what was discussed, but we did tell you that we provided you information on how to establish a committee, what the guidelines, the agendas, the minutes, all that thing. The only thing we didn't provide was names, which you requested. We're not going to provide names unless there's an established process. And again, we don't mind providing you that information, but you're also not using that information.
I can also assure you that as far as the minutes that you provide, we don't agree with a lot of what you sent us as far as the minutes, and I'll leave it at that. Other than that, city council, we do do make a recommendation that we move forward with appointing the committee.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes.
And there's been a second on the floor, and we'll ask for additional public comment. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving item E, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Now we will move into item eight. Follow-up and administrative issues. Consider approving various board nominations of public housing authority Barbara Brown to a second term, Jamie Colvin to a third term, and Wes Masters to a fifth term, all ending April of 2025. Do I have a motion for approval?
So vote.
Second.
Any public comment on the names that were just listed? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.